All the nations qualify of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
Follow me to your order. We'll call.
Mayor Westerfield?
Yes.
Sandkamp?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
We're gonna move public forum down, and before we start anything, I would like everybody to know that I want to thank Jeff and Emily Meyer for what they did last Thursday and Friday. They got all that donation stuff and took it up to Spencer, and then came back, got more. I think Rock Valley got some. You made Lakeview look very good. I want to thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
All right.
Thank you.
The council chambers was full of stuff. It was awesome to see.
Yep. We do the consent agenda. Any additions or corrections? Most of you approve. One second.
Who did Mike? Beckman?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Sandkamp?
Yes.
Walton?
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna start the nuisance hearing. We have a gentleman here who'd like to address the council. Please do so.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, city administrator, council members, I'm Greg Seaman. I'm a lawyer from Carroll, and I represent John Regland and his trust, which owns property on the west side, far west side of Lakeview. I think all of you are familiar with the problem, and the problem really is nobody's fault. It's a problem that probably was created years ago and probably was handled informally when it was initially discovered, and nothing was said about it until recently. But the problem is this, excuse me, the problem is this, the south boundary line of the city park in that area would rest at the northwest edge of the Regland property, right on the property edge. If we look at the southeast part, survey marker for the southeast corner of the city park property, it lies several feet into what you'd assume was a Regland property, so that if you cut a line between the southeast survey marker and the southwest survey marker, you cut off part of the Regland house, and that's just not gonna work. So coupled with that is the fact that at some point in time, a concrete patio was installed off the northwest edge of the Regland property. Now, Mr. Regland did not construct that patio. The previous owner, Mark Hanson, did not. We think it was his parents when they owned the property. And probably, the problem was discovered way back then, and whatever was done to resolve it with the city was not informally, when it should've been figured out in a more formal fashion so people knew where to start. Now, we've got that problem to deal with. Mr. Regland is looking for a permanent solution to that problem. There are really three things that have been discussed. One would be a lease, where Mr. Regland could lease a portion of the adjoining city property. One would be a sale of the property. One would be a permanent easement. Our position on the matter is this, and I would submit to the city council proposal that we think a solution to the problem would be if Mr. Regland, his trust as owner of the property, would buy an easement from the city for about fifteen feet from the south border of the city park north, just fifteen feet north, a permanent easement would solve the problem. So that's our position. I'd be happy to answer any questions or discuss it with anyone.
I think some of the council have some questions. I think it's unfair that we would punish somebody that owns it now that didn't have anything to do with it, and it came up because the snap was damaged. We're worried about being, somebody could trip and fall and sue the city, so I'd like to see some sort of a fair and equitable thing between us.
And Mr. Regland would as well, and Mr. Regland would be happy, I want you to know, to pay the city for the easement. Now, just so everybody has this clear, Mr. Regland bought the property not realizing that there was a problem. In fact, the previous owner was Mark Hanson, promoter board, and I don't think Mark Hanson was aware that there was a problem either. Now, his parents were probably more aware of the situation, but one way or the other, they believed that it had been solved. But the problem is, when it was solved, as many things were done forty or fifty years ago just with a handshake, without doing it more formally, which should've been done. Now, that's the kind of a problem, unfortunately, that exists at Lakeview, or any place you have these lakes. I can tell you, because I have property on West Lake Okoboji, we have the same situations up there with property. Things were done years ago informally, and they now, when things have become more formalized, especially since property values have increased, these problems are rearing their head. Same thing's true, as you might know, with the problems that they have right now with Twin Lakes. It's just common to these lakes in Iowa because of the way they were originally developed. Nobody tried to do anything wrong. It's just that the development was haphazard in the beginning, and those shortcuts that were taken in the beginning of the lake developments in all of our Iowa lakes are now becoming more serious problems. And we'd like to find a solution to this problem, and Mr. Regland is certainly willing to pay for a permanent easement.
I think we have some councilmen that would like to weigh in, one way or the other.
Sure. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Is Mr. Regland in favor of a lease of the ground?
Well, he would not be, Mr. Beckman, simply because a lease, you know, if it was a ninety-nine-year lease, sure, but the lease proposals that I've heard have not been for that long a time. They've been like for five years, and that simply kicks the can down the road.
Well, I agree that it kicks the can down the road, but at some point in time, the can has to stop going down the road, in my opinion.
And we'd like to stop it from going down the road, and that's why I suggested a permanent easement.
A permanent easement is, then we'd have to define what the value's worth, and then when you're paying that permanent easement, then we're selling, basically selling off city ground without a bidding process or a public, and this is only my opinion and one of five, okay? But the city has ground by my place on the lake, and I sure wouldn't mind having a permanent easement to that either, so see the dilemma that I'm in?
Well, of course. It does pose a dilemma, because assistance for one property owner might be looked at as unfairly by other property owners. But this is a little different, because the situation presents itself that if it were seriously strained out, you'd have to cut off a portion of...
I remember when that addition was built on, it was built on by John Meyer from Dennison. You probably remember John Meyer.
I have no gentleman.
Yeah, he...
In the cafeteria.
Yeah, he ran the cafeteria department, yeah. He probably...
Are you talking about the little porch area there up?
Front porch area with the side entrance, the cement down below.
But if you look at where the pin placements are and drew a direct line from one to the other, it actually goes through the house.
Yes, I've been down there. I've looked at it. I'm just saying, after that addition was put on, was it John Meyer?
That was what, probably early eighties?
Early eighties is when he did it, yeah.
I was gonna say eighty-five to ninety. I was working for Paul Alex at the time, so... That's cute, nor here nor there. I'm just saying that I knew him well enough, spent a lot of time there, and he just did stuff and did it. And that's probably when this all started. Not that that matters, but that's only my opinion. I've said my piece. I'll let the other guys say theirs. I'm not, and I'm not opposed to doing something to make it work, but at some point in time, you know, we've got other neighbors in that same neighborhood. Well, I wouldn't mind twenty feet for a parking stall as well, right north of that. I'm gonna call it north. Maybe it's east. As you're looking at the lake, left.
Sure.
Be north, yes. On the north side of it.
But you know, because there is other neighbors right there that have the same parking issues, so I feel, as representing the city of Lakeview, I gotta do what's best for the folks in Lakeview, and yet try and work with you guys. That's my position.
I can tell you, there is, this has nothing to do with parking issue. From my standpoint.
Okay. I'm just stating the obvious.
So I guess my question is, is are there any other properties like that, like your easement, compared to this one where the property, former property owner built it on, you know, across the property line?
All the way down the personal property.
So none of those property lines had a...
Well, there's a lot of people that built on the other side of the, it's the city's property or DNR's property. Depends when, who you're talking to, when, who owns it. But there's boathouses built along there and other patios, which would stop that now, or there's, you know, there's no more buildings, because it's not on their property. So we have them same issues going down the road.
Just like this one?
Very similar. I think they're similar.
David, have you seen any kind of action like this anywhere else, or have any kind of solution that comes to your mind at all?
Yeah, well, I'm from, I live in Storm Lake, and we've had several situations like this where there's been a private occupation of what became known as public or was public property. And like Greg was saying, in the early days, in the twenties, thirties, nobody cared. Forties, fifties, they're there. I mean, you run into the idea of how long the encroachment has occurred, whether or not that best study rights of the property owner. So a lot of times, the cities are willing to try to work out some kind of compromise to avoid litigation, number one, and two, to avoid the establishment by the owner of a wrecked, by adverse possession, for example.
So do they have any kind of, anything on record, I should say, how this turns out, or how they settled it, my chance, or?
A lot of times, they use leases. That's, in Lakeside where I live, they use leases. They're short-term, which is an objection for the owner, I know, but by our law, if the city leases a property for more than three years, it has to be put up for public bid, and the successful bidder will then have the right to that lease for whatever it's worth to somebody who's not enjoying it, you know? So that's a hurdle that we have to go through, when we start talking about leases more than three years and duration.
Can we do a lease that would just keep going if nobody objects? If nobody's, either party doesn't care, we just keep doing it every three years or five?
Yeah, if the lease would have an automatic renewal in it for three years, with either party having the right to terminate the lease upon somebody's new amount of dollars, or just thirty, ninety, ten.
So we wouldn't have to go through the seventy-three year?
And then in that lease renewal, we can look at the trade value of the ground to offset the lease, you know what I mean? Because if your property taxes keep, we're basically leasing, just for conversation, versus twenty feet, fifteen feet, whatever it is, we lease the fifteen feet of Lakefront property, then that value of that property changes every two years. We need to adjust our lease price. See what I'm saying?
And we could do that every three years, or whatever we should do, and say, hey, it's gone up?
But he said we don't want to go more than three, because then we have to put up a public, and I don't think we want to do that. I think it's either, if we're gonna lease it, it's gonna be the Regland's. That's my opinion. Right? Thoughts?
Tie the lease, the value of the lease to his property taxes based on the extension?
Right, yeah.
Well, obviously, you know, we would still prefer an easement, and the reason is, if there would always be, with the lease, three years, even though renewable, but terminable at the will of either party, that would put a cloud on the value of that house, because at any time, you know, a city council could say, okay, we're not gonna do this, and that would force Mr. Regland to seek a litigious situation, a solution to the problem, because what's he gonna do? Cut off the north end of his house? I mean, it just destroys property value. And what we were thinking about is a long-term easement, a permanent easement, and Mr. Regland would be willing to negotiate with the city for a fair price for permanent easement, because that would protect his property value and resolve the thing permanently.
How does that work the permanent easement?
A permanent easement would mean that he would have a potential right...
Right, to access that property.
Right where the land, access that property, exclusive to his property, yes.
What about liability then? Where's this liability pulled then? If somebody would trip and break the leg off of that cement thing accidentally or whatever, and we're doing an easement, the city still owns it, so is the city liable then?
Legally, no. The property owner with the permanent easement would be liable.
You were saying the property owner, which would be the city?
No, property owner of the home.
Of the easement?
Of the easement?
Yes, because the easement then goes with the property.
Yes, and that would be, that would fall on the owner of the house, Mr. Regland. You're legalizing for absolutely.
David, what's your thoughts on it?
I think we have, one of the things that, when I first looked at this situation a while back, was that it's called a, there's an Iowa code section three sixty-four point twelve, that the city has a statutory duty to keep public grounds, streets, sidewalks, public ways, squares and commons open, in repair and free from nuisance. This statutory duty of breach could give rise to liability for the city for the damages caused by the breach. The delegation of this duty to a private entity does not relieve the city from liability, and there's a nineteen thirty-one case that I have cited. I don't know that ever should...
I think the rule upon the day, Dave, you know, would fall on the property owner with the easement for legal liability.
At least we would have to have indemnification.
We have, we could put an indemnification, an whole harmless agreement.
We could put that as part of the easement.
In the terms of the easement. Certainly, and Mr. Regland would be willing to do that, of course.
That makes it more, doesn't that make it more permanent on the liability side of it versus a lease?
Well, the lease actually...
Unless you put an indemnification clause in there as well?
The lease is safer for the city, because when you concede control of the property to it, unless you, then you're not liable any longer, except we still, I don't think we can, we're gonna have problems with that statute that I've decided, because at least, as far as I know today, the city cannot de away their responsibilities to keep public ways open and free from nuisance.
Well, David...
Can I ask you one other question?
Yes, sir.
And I don't know if we can do this, and I know that mistakes, I think it's, could we put up for a bid at a reasonable figure to sell two foot of the property line to get it so the house is always on the Regland property?
I, I...
Because I know them stakes are like within two feet.
The stake, but the problem is, it doesn't cover that patio gap.
Right.
And the house is built such that, what do you do about that, you know? Practically, because the sidewalk running along the north side of that house goes down to the lake, you need to buy, if you give that, he would need to buy probably more than two feet.
I don't think it's much more. It might be three. We'd have to measure, and I'm just talking out loud. It's not been discussed, to my knowledge, to try and get everything on there, and then that gives him access to his house, and his house is always there, and then, because he said it's not for parking.
That's right. Parking is not the problem.
Right, so then it's a permanent fix as well, but I don't know if we can sell that without going to public, however we did it.
You know, different than what we did, sir, the restaurant coming in down there.
I'm just asking them questions, so we have a better understanding, to talk about ourselves, ideas.
We talked about fifteen feet, because fifteen feet clears that concrete patio, and it also solves the problem at the east end, the lakeside of the property, where the pin appears to be much further south, you know? Because if you connect the survey pins, you cut right through the house. So it would have to be more than three feet on the east side.
So you'd have a fifteen feet starting from the pin?
Yes, on both ends, fifteen feet north would solve the whole problem.
I don't think we can do that, can we, without going to public bid?
We're not selling it, no.
We're not selling it.
Not selling it, but if you did that, you'd have to go to public bid, and then my fear is, we're opening up a can of worms. Why aren't you gonna sell me another fifteen feet? And then I'd like fifteen feet, just so I got a dock down.
You don't have the same situation.
No, no, no. Somebody else in that neighborhood would want the next fifteen feet to the north, so then they can just have a dock access like that.
Don't worry about it.
Anybody, it could be anybody in town.
Well, why?
Well, I think, I think, I mean, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, with that, I think you would have a certain degree of stance to say, you know, this is a particular situation of trying to fix a problem that was done many, many years ago. It's not that we're just wanting to sell public property. We're just trying to, in a sense, correct or take care of a situation that's just been going on for, you know, many, many years. So at the end, I think you would have a stance, as a council or as a city, to say, if that were to be approached, that wasn't, that's not the council's intent.
Right. So what about, you'd really rather have an easement, but the city's best interest would is a lease, from what I'm hearing, fifteen feet, and if we had a lease that is a, you can call it a ninety-nine-year lease, or a lifetime lease, or however you want to word it, you'll have to help me with that, but reviewed every two years or three years, so we don't have to do that public stuff, I mean...
Public bidding.
Public bidding, yeah, there you go.
Well, Dave, do you feel that we would have to do public bidding with a permanent easement also?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, well, if that...
You know, here's the other thing. I'm not, I don't see what ponder would be in putting it in for a public bid and seeing what happens, because the council could reject any of the bids at that point. We may be fearful of a problem that doesn't exist.
It just has to be monetary. You also have to plan for it, and there isn't anybody that's gonna have a plan.
Mr. Regland would hope to be the high bidder.
Well, absolutely.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We would hope that he's the high bidder.
If that's the way, Dave, you feel the law is, with an easement as well as a sale, then I think we would prefer the sale to be done with it, you know?
I mean, that'd be the cleanest.
Yeah.
I think that's the cleanest myself, for everybody.
If you put it up for sale, can you put a caveat in there that whoever wins the bid can't put a dock on that piece of land?
Well, we would have the ability to accept any and all bids.
Or reject. Or reject. So if it's not you, they could reject.
I think just owning, this is where we get into, you might know more about this than I do, but if you got a fifteen-foot frontage, I don't think you're gonna get a dock from the state.
It only takes ten.
We haven't given dock permits in years.
It's ten.
Only takes ten feet. You can look at some of them down there now that have just a sliver to get a dock.
Well, we could take bids, but the bid has to accompany, what are you gonna do with this property?
Right.
That would stop it.
We can do that, yeah.
Where are you talking about? Where are you talking about?
From Mr. Regland's property go to, apparently the south, down south around that bend.
But those are DNR issued permits, not city.
Again...
You're saying it could happen?
It could happen, right.
But we would still have the say of what is going there. We're not gonna take an extra hundred bucks because somebody could get a hundred dollars more, knowing that John wants it because of what he's doing.
Same situation at the restaurant.
With the corner, that sliver on the corner.
And I think we come up with a, if we go down that route, we come up with a fair purchase price, minimum bid price.
With a plan.
With a plan.
That council would approve.
Then we, when we do those, Greg, we usually put in there that they have to bring the property out of nuisance.
Excuse me, out of what?
They would have to keep it up to city code, which in this case would mean that the cracks and all that, that would all have to be...
Oh, Mr. Regland, if this problem was solved, he's prepared to fix all that.
Well, that would be part of the requirement, so if you've got somebody who's coming in with a stray bid, just to cause problems, or to try to run your bid up, for example, they still would have to comply, and there's not much you can do with a fifteen-foot.
We have no problems.
First of all, the setback from the house, that's a big, eighteen, right? You have a four for his house and four for their house.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now, if their concern is the appearance of that concrete pad and sidewalk, Mr. Regland would be the only two, he wants to replace that anyway, and the only two.
Well, I think that's what started this whole...
I think that's what started it. He wanted a fix, and we weren't there.
Okay. I think that's right, as I remember. This has been going on for about two years.
Yes, we've had some staff changes and...
Yeah.
So what if, Dave, we put some language together to that effect? See what happens, and you guys work together and put that...
Yeah, we're very happy to work with you.
The one thing that that solves is if there's some member of the public out there that has a beef about it, they come to the sale and will hear about it then, and the council could decide what to do then. Because right now, we don't know a lot of facts. It just has some speculation. That's what I would recommend to the council.
It's a learning process. I didn't know that John Meyer from Dennison had owned that house. I thought Mark Hanson's parents owned that house and had that concrete patio.
Yeah.
I know Mr. Meyer, and I can understand how that could have happened without any building from that or the city's knowledge, or any regard for any survey pins.
They're just a simple gesture.
Sure.
You know, in my opinion, I think that'd be the way to go, and it'd be a lot cleaner and...
Agreed.
So we need some sort of motion to the director, the city attorney, and the city administrator to put something together, and we'll do what we've come to.
Well, I think we need to, I'd like to make the motion that we discuss this in a closed session to have a, because we're, the sale of the city property, and then...
Correct.
Have to put the parameters together and work with Mr. Seaman. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. Is that, Dave, you're okay?
Yes, we're entitled to a closed session, because we're discussing the sale of the Regland's, so that's one of the incentives.
We have a motion to the second call call.
Beckman?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Sandkamp?
Yes.
Walton?
Yep.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
This is an approach to one or the other.
They're here now.
We're trying to fix something that happened a long time ago. Okay, we'll go back to the public forum. Is there anybody on the public forum? Please, come up.
Please, come up.
Hey, Eric Helfer, my name is Kayanne Hewitt, and this is my husband, Joe. In November of two thousand, or twenty twenty-one, we purchased the house on one oh three Hyde Street, and have been gradually fixing that up over the last three years. Trying to stay in touch with the city if we had any changes that needed to be made, make sure we got our permits drawn up, because a lot of the handiwork we did ourselves. We were told that the garage in the back of the house could not be higher or taller than the house that we currently have. We did submit it at fifteen and three quarters, and I do understand that it is up higher than that, that was not intentional, that was not, we were trying to sneak something by. When we talked, when I visited, we don't remember the gentleman's name that was here previously, when I submitted the paperwork, our hand drawings. He did also had to be lower than our current home, we estimated our home to be at sixteen foot, so we listed it as fifteen and three quarters. We were, to say the least, extremely shocked when we got paperwork in the mail Saturday with no visitation from anyone ahead of time about anything that had been going on, that building has been up for at least two years, the garage has been. We did not remove the concrete sidewalk, the sidewalk is still there. I see in here where it was the responsibility of the homeowner to keep that sidewalk up. If you wanna see pictures of when we purchased this, the home, how overgrown that sidewalk was and not taken care of, dirt, debris, grass, so when they came in and seeded, we did have them seed that, but we're happy to dig that back up. We can take that back off, if that's what you would like us to do. The reason we didn't, at that time, when we said, go ahead and seed, is because, like, down a couple blocks from us, there was a house on First Street that previously had a sidewalk on it, and they tore that house down and tore the sidewalk out and everything. So we thought, well, if it's covered up, there's no sidewalks on either side of us, there's several houses in Lakeview that sit on a corner that don't have sidewalks going both directions. Again, we were just trying to make improvements, this is our retirement, our forever home. Trying to add value, we sourced ninety-five percent of our, all of our goods, we purchased from here in Lakeview, we hired local contractors, when a contractor needed to have done. So it wasn't our intent to upset anyone or deliberately go against any rules. We'd like to visit about this, obviously, Joe can start Wednesday digging up the dirt off the sidewalk, if that would be, I, I kinda felt like giving us under a month to have that sidewalk repaired or replaced. Was a little shocking, because I think everybody knows how hard it is to be a contractor. Everything that we've done, we'd have to go like here in advance to have people come help us. So, if there's any way we can resolve this, or, we're all open, and I know you can't make any decisions tonight, cause it's open forum, but.
You can base this from Scott was here, correct?
If, if you stated your house was at sixteen feet, how did this garage get two foot or more depth in it?
And again, I'm gonna be totally honest with you, because my husband and my son built that garage, Scott said it had to be lower than our house, so we made sure that it was lower than our house. When we visited, when I visited with Scott, we assumed our house was probably about sixteen foot. We did not measure, we didn't, honestly, I'm not even gonna try to pretend that we.
It's probably closer to a twenty foot, the house.
The house is not.
Yeah.
As I say, the house, the house does sit a little taller than the garage.
Yes, and the house, and that's what he did tell us, is that it had to be more than our house.
And when I was looking at it, I can see, you know, your intent was not to build it so that you could put up a ten foot garage or a twelve foot garage. I personally think that you did it to make it aesthetically.
Pleasing.
Pleasing to the house, because you have a fairly steep, so you, you made the pitch of the roof more, you know, steeper than, to, to match up what the house looks like, so that it, you didn't have a flat roof like this on the.
Yes.
On a garage, and you got a peak like this on the house.
Yes.
So I can, I can see where it, what the intent was with the peak of the garage, certainly.
Well, I think it's kinda hard to punish it for interpreting his, when Scott was here, he did what he asked.
And we tried, and I'm not dragging you in, but whenever there was like, there was an old garage there that we were gonna attach to the house, and we figured out that we couldn't, because there were no footings under that garage, so I came back up and I talked to him and said, I'm gonna have to sell this garage out, we're gonna have to dig new footings and add the garage on to make it work with the house. And we said, yeah, go ahead, that's no problem.
Right, and, and even with the fence, you, you called up, and while you were cleaning the fence, and made sure that, you know, we came out and remeasured to make sure that it was within compliance.
Yeah.
You know, of the setbacks, you know, so.
And we did pay the extra fee to have that on the street side, because I thought, honestly, if I would have a hot sun back there, I'm just gonna spare all of you from seeing me in my t-shirt. Driving my own street.
Yeah, and I think some, I think some of the question comes into play of the eighteen foot garage with the sixteen foot limitation, what we, what we would have had you do was seek a variance to follow what would have been required to be able to go, to go to that, that height. And so, those are the building codes, you know, that we have in place, and probably the reason for the letter and, you know, was, okay, the council was like, we have this property, and so if we, we kinda have to follow what the rules are. And probably that's, you know, that's why, and it's why you're coming to talk to us to see what, what can be done to solve it.
Yes. And I do understand it totally now that we're, got the letter, was like, I didn't know anything else at that time.
Right, and I didn't know that the sidewalk was still there underneath it, so that, I learned something new today.
Yes.
And when? When did we start making people replace the sidewalks?
It's in the ordinance, that says if you were to take out a sidewalk, that you have to replace the sidewalk.
And it's still under there.
Many years.
It definitely is still under there.
Half the town doesn't have sidewalks, we counted around ten years ago.
So, I mean, if you're wanting us to dig up all that dirt and take that back off there, we can do that, if that's, I mean, but to replace it, we did, we never tore it out, it was just so badly overgrown and.
We thought it would look a lot nicer as a yard, so. So the neighbors on your side don't have?
No, there's nothing across from me, and there's a house down.
There's a sidewalk that goes to nowhere.
Yes, pretty much.
No, no, is there, is it, I thought there was a sidewalk on the, the west side.
There is across the alley and by the pastor's house.
Good, so it kind of, it stops at the alleyway and then it extends to the west, so there is a sidewalk on the west.
Yes.
On the, on the west of you.
Yes. And like I say, I'm not in any way, shape, or form, I, I just need like answers to questions. So this house right here on First Street had a sidewalk, it was very obviously there, and then they bought the property, and you can still see where the side, is there some sort of permit that we need to ask for to have that sidewalk on? Cause that sidewalk's never been replaced over there. And I'm not trying to start.
We have it another push.
So here.
Steve Roberts bought that corner.
Yeah, it's all down that way, and he tore it up.
This is their. Yeah.
It looks much better than it did.
It does, and hopefully our property looks much better.
Sidewalk doesn't extend to the west.
Yeah, it.
So it stops at the alleyway.
How we can figure out something on that.
And this is where they covered, they covered, they covered it up. See, there's.
It's a hard partnership for following what Scott told you to do.
And then there's a sidewalk that goes across the street.
If you followed what Scott did, and now we wanna change that, I think that's.
I can't, you know.
Yeah, but Scott might have told them, well, if your house is sixteen feet, just need to stay lower than that, cause that's what they thought their house was.
They, they did what.
So that's, that's, well, that's the information Scott had, he didn't have the correct information.
Feet, right, so, but that, but that's what they told, that's what they told Scott.
You can't.
Sixteen feet.
Yeah, they told Scott it was sixteen feet, he said, so just keep your garage below your house and you'll be fine. Well, the, the, the information that Scott got was not accurate, that, that he had to go off of.
So is all of that, like, like if there's older buildings, like, this, this sits right behind us in the alley right here, and that's an unattached garage, and that's.
That's all grandfathered.
That's all grandfathered.
Right.
These ordinances were made in ninety-six, ninety-seven?
I don't, yeah, and, and you changed, I mean, some of them have been updated and done differently since then too, so I can't tell you when sixteen feet came into play.
And this height one has been revisited by planners only more than once.
Okay, so, we, I know you can't make decisions tonight, and again. It was never our intent to deliberately go against anything that was.
But we're opening up a can of worms if we allow this, the next person. I mean, we've, we've had issues with what we call houses, people want to build a bigger shed, over sixteen feet, but they gotta put living quarters in it to make it compliant.
So do we put a living quarters in this garage, do we put a kitchenette in there, do we put a restroom in there?
In, in your building, you don't, built, a living quarters has to be seven or eight feet.
Would that add on?
Yeah, yeah.
Just don't go up, huh? Well, but if your other solution would be to add on to the garage and attach it to your house, if you do that, then you can go up to sixteen.
So if we do some sort of attachment, like we have a porch already coming off, a little patio coming off that, somehow we attached that to the other garage, it would cover that? Like if we made like a walkway or.
Brusel. Brusel.
Yep. We don't know, always, those council members don't always agree with the rules, but the rules are in place and we're elected to follow them.
Right, and I totally respect that, I totally respect that.
And we follow them sometimes, that's why there's not sidewalks around town, cause we don't follow the rules for that.
So I know you can't make a decision tonight, cause it's open forum, but I, I, our concern was that we were gonna be penalized.
Well, you're addressing it, so that's.
Okay.
I mean, we can work with that too, if we know you're working with us.
Yes.
When it comes up with an agenda item, you'll be notified that we're talking about it if it comes to that.
Perfect.
Is that fair?
Does he need to get started on digging up the sidewalk?
I don't know.
Well, I'm a person that walks in town, and I like walking on sidewalks, so that's me. I know we have other people in town that don't walk on sidewalks, they walk on the road, so. I have another council that they're working on a sidewalk program, we just haven't got that far yet with all this changes.
Taking the thought that this is open forum, I would probably make the suggestion that you could formally put it on the agenda on the fifteenth, and then if you want to make a decision at that time, so you have, you know, you, the timeframe that you were provided in the letter, I think we can make that extension until the, because you have visited with the council this evening, I think we can urgently make the extension until at least the fifteenth, and say, you know, what the council would like to, to do at that time.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You've really made that corner look nice.
Thank you, very much.
Yeah, thanks for your time.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, we'll go on to utility director's report, Jason.
Are you ready now? Okay. Flashpad maintenance swept some streets, did all the line painting in town, had a concrete bench poured for the bench in front of Dorothy Jane's, moved the floats around, pushed up the dump, pulled some wire, threw some inter duct out of Lakewood, mowed, spread rock out at the wastewater treatment plant, they have now completed the punch list items. We need, I'll have all that submitted to Todd, and then we'll move on to the next step of whatever the engineering and Dave obviously suggests us to do with the situation that we have with our wastewater treatment plant. Worked on the drinking fountains out at the park, installed a new AC in the PD, moved the rock pillar so they could dismantle it, and then moved it to where now they can, uh, put it together. On the hottest day in town, or of the year so far, we installed a heater at the shelter house.
Is there a condition building up at the time?
Yes. Had bucket, uh, bucket rescue training through IMAU on if our bucket were to ever fail. Placed new pole out in Hickory, changed out a photocell, changed out some outlets at the campground, talked to the DNR some more, cleaned up equipment from trees and painting, and just trying to knock out some of the stuff from the campground, punch list stuff, or, I shouldn't say punch list, of list of items that they give us that are in need of repair or looking at. So, not bad for a short week.
I, I've got one question for you, I had a phone call on Sat- Saturday about Lake Street. Did you have a chance to call the engineer or address that situation?
I tried to call Mike with Ten Point, I left a message, I have not got a call back.
Lake Shore Drive, I believe, is what.
Yeah.
Yeah. Lake Shore Drive.
When it was raining, it's running across Max Lumber's property. Pat Widerin's the one that called me, I was afraid that if we get a heavy rain, that's when it runs across his property into his basement.
It's not under into the center.
So right up next to Max's property, it's fairly level, cause when they poured that, they poured it right up to.
The old one?
Right up.
The other new one?
Yeah, right up flush with it, so it's a little flat right there, and then it starts the gradual slope, the reverse swale. So if it sits on that top part, it runs to the empty lot right there, and then eventually, it could potentially go down their stairs and into their property.
And the empty lot, that concrete's not leveling, so it's kind of got a gradual slope to the, to Widerin's property, so that's where the water's flowing to.
I thought Max wanted to make sure that that was level with his property, so it didn't have a bump to go over.
That would have been prior to my knowledge at that point.
I thought that was at one of the meetings we had at one time, I could be wrong.
Line painting looks great, but I did have somebody ask me, how come we don't put the, you know, we got some of the wider lines by the stop signs, how come we don't do that by most of the other stop signs?
We did forget two of them, one up by the high school, and then the one on Lake Street are the only two that we forgot.
And like, what, what road is that coming up from Bob Warren Dean Range, what street is that, close past your house?
Lake Street.
Lake Street, up to Lake Street by the park, there's no white line there.
So.
And I don't know if there used to be, I'm just asking them.
If there's not one there, we don't, we haven't been painting new ones that have not been existing.
Is there a reason we don't do that, I, that's, I just need to answer that question.
I.
Just because they've never done, we never, we didn't, used to do crosswalks by the post office till Larry Nelson, all of it, we do that now. Not, not saying in Kalamazoo.
I, there's nothing that says we can't do it, it's just they've never been there, so we've never done it. I mean, if that's something that the council wants, we can paint, I call them stop sticks.
Right.
We can paint stop sticks at every stop sign if that's what's wanted, but if they weren't pre-existing, we never painted them, so.
Cause I know like the end of Third Street down there by Sparkies, there's not one going on the highways, I think it might be something to visit for safety reasons, if that makes sense.
Yeah, we have no, I mean, it doesn't take us very long to do it, it's just, they were never there, so we never did it.
Yeah, that's the only question I had, I think they look, the way you got done was great.
Also, drivers should know where they're, where they're supposed to stop.
Are we allowed to go close to the state highway without getting permission to paint those lines, or?
So the one down by Sparkies, we might have to have a conversation with the DOT, but the other ones in town, we wouldn't have to have a conversation.
Yeah, the one down by Sparkies, I don't, yeah, I think that would entail a conversation, but the other ones, no.
It was just a question asked to me, I didn't have the answer.
Yeah, if they.
You wanna make sure you're placing them in the right spot, or, because they can't go past the stop sign.
Correct. And like I said, we have no problem doing it, if that's what the council's gonna direct us, they would like us to do. We can go paint what I call stop sticks again at every stop sign, if that's what is required or requested by per council. We don't have a problem doing that, I mean, we're gonna have to order more paint right now, cause we, based off of what we have, going off of what we did last year, we ordered enough paint to do it, so we probably have to get a couple more gallons of paint, but that's minimal.
I think we could have a discussion on what, you know, I don't know that every stop sign in town needs to have. I think we could have a discussion on what, you know, I don't know that every stop sign in town needs to have a stop stick.
I think on the main streets.
But I think we can have a conversation of looking at what, what isn't currently done and maybe what would make sense.
Right, I agree.
The tone looks damn good, Jason.
Thank you.
We're trying.
Assistant administrator reports.
Um, let's see, Kay was gone Monday through Thursday last week, so Tammy and I held down the fort while she wasn't here. Um, and then, uh, I worked on some grant reimbursements and in that short week, you know, finished preparing fiscal year end and getting us ready to roll for the new, the new budget. So that was pretty much my week last week.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay, we got four building permits, they're all good to go.
Yeah.
Eric? Have a motion to approve those building permits.
Uh, we need to pull out and see.
Who?
Scott Moore, bill of permit. That's page nineteen. Page eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. They got denied their variance for a deck.
They had a previous variance, so.
For a pergola.
I sat in on the board of adjustments meeting for this. And Linda and Scott requested anything up to eight feet. And the board of adjustments were pretty stuck on just issuing the original variance. Um, they had several neighbors complaining, that was taken into consideration, I think. But yeah, they wanted just the original variance that said a pergola with no post coming down.
So we can approve the other three and then discuss that one, is that how you do that?
We can do that. Let's have a motion to approve the first three.
No, A, B, D.
First two and then last one, A, B, and D. Do you want to approve those?
I'll make the motion.
Roll call.
Zach Camp?
Yes.
Walman?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Okay, now we have discussion on this one. Thirty-six inches, isn't that?
Yeah, that was the previous, that was twenty-two variance, so it's agreed to for thirty-three feet.
All right. And it was agreed to for a pergola back then. And I sat in on that first meeting and Linda, and Linda had a picture of it that day, of the pergola, with the design that they wanted. And there was some questions that day of the post coming down, no post coming down. It was just, and I think, if I remember correctly, it was the bigger thing, Linda, correct me if I'm wrong here. The, it was a big controversy or controversy, conversation about you wanted it to help for shade, to keep the house cooler, uh, air conditioner stuff running all the time, and then now it's turned into a dam. So it was approved on that first one for a pergola and she, I don't know if you have a picture yet or.
Not with you.
Yeah, um, that's what it was. It was just a overhang, a three-foot overhang coming up, three-foot overhang coming out of a pergola fast into the house. That's what the original variance was for.
Look, I have a three-foot variance, I don't see why the.
Well, you can read it right in here, it says variance for a pergola.
I think his question is, is.
So if they get a deck, and I'm just telling you what can happen, now it can all of a sudden be enclosed.
I think his question is more, the three foot is the three foot. Is the variance necessarily for what going on it or just for the three foot? Is that more what you're saying?
The, the, the variance, the wording of the variance actually does say a three-foot variance for a pergola.
Okay.
Yes.
It doesn't define what a pergola is, but it does say for a pergola.
Yep, and it, it was at the first one, I sat in on that one. It was discussed heavily and there was the post coming down and it was that the post come down to the ground and now that there, and then it can be enclosed. And that's why they allowed just the pergola with no post. It doesn't say in here no post, but that's what was talked about at that first one, just informing, because I, I sit in on their meetings, except I was going on this last one. So.
So what we need is clarification whether, but the picture here includes posts.
Well, the, this is what they want to do now.
Right.
This is not what they submitted for the variance the first. This is what they submitted for the variance the second time, because they wanted to make it more than three foot. I think they wanted it to be seven or eight foot. And, um, that's what got denied. Was it last week?
Yep.
Last week, what do you think? And they're already. Their setback, they're already out further than the neighbors the way it is. And here's, and I have the minutes from the planning zoning meeting back in, when they talked about that, in front of setbacks, they wanted us to see it. They looked at other surrounding towns with lakes. I mean, Arnold's Park, Enos Brook Lake Park, Oakley Bowdy Spirit Lake, Storm Lake, and what they have for every setbacks. Scott, I found that in my notes, so.
And then we'll need to have a motion in a second to deny the building permit. Is that what the council wants to do?
I'll make that motion to deny the building permit for Scott and Rudy.
House, Eric. Roll call.
Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Walman?
Yes.
Stankamp?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Okay, resolution twenty, twenty-four dash twenty-seven is the fiscal year ending. Any explanation, transfers only?
Um, yeah, I mean, basically, this is the end of your transfers that I put together, that, you know, throughout the year, we do a few of transfers. Um, but this is kind of what had been budgeted to, um, move some funding around. Um, there are a few things that I did take out just because we did not, um, the funds that they would have been coming from. They're already negative, so I, um, one of them being water, I didn't allow any transfers to be done going over to the planning fund because we were already negative in the water fund. And also, um, the electric fund, um, that ended up being about thirty thousand to the red this, at the end of fiscal year. Um, so, and a lot of that, when I went back and I, you know, looked at the expenses throughout the year, the biggest thing that threw us to the negative on electric was health insurance costs. Um, and one of the things that, um, going forward this fiscal year is to kind of, um, take the health insurance costs and, you know, try and divvy up the health insurance costs. It's one of the reasons why we did what we did at budget time. Um, to take some of the relief off the electric department, because we were almost, we were well over two hundred thousand dollars. We only budgeted like a hundred and forty thousand for health insurance. We are way over two hundred thousand dollars on health insurance costs for this fiscal year that came out of the electric fund. That pushed it, our electric fund to the red. So, you know, with that being said, there were some transfers that would have gone to planning funds that I took out because I didn't feel that, that we could, you know, one, make sense out of those transfers. Because it would have just pushed those other funds further to the red. So this was what I felt that we could, we could manage.
They're motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Beckman?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Walman?
Yeah.
Stankamp?
Yes.
And that one, Eric wants to be reappointed to the PMZ, he had a motion to approve that, so I'll make that motion.
Mike made the motion?
David.
Roll call.
Dave will second?
Yep.
Frank?
Yes.
Walman?
Yes.
Stankamp?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Talk about the Camp Crescent fence.
Uh, so what you have in front of you is technically four quotes. Um, the first quote that you look at is broke down Camp Crescent Museum of Lake Shore Drive. And that is the wooden fence. And then the next two are if you went with the doughy color, um, or the sand color. And you can see the price difference. And then it was asked today, um, that I get a different one, which is, uh, that scan in. And that's just of the wooden fence, which would be an apple for apple of what we would get from the other supplier. Uh, the only thing these quotes do not include is the amount of rock that we will need to put in for the fence post. We're looking at probably another eighteen hundred dollars to two thousand dollars for rock to put in each post.
I, uh, I think we need to do something with the fence, but I would like to, I talked to Teresa about this. I would like to kind of incorporate it into a bigger picture plan for the campground. We know there's other stuff that needs to be done down there. And if we can get by a little while, we can put a thing together and talk about some future improvements for the campground. That's my opinion. How long would you allow postmen to do? Well, I would say we can start putting plans together and then, uh, see where it goes and what we can do. I'm, I'm ready to start. I've got some ideas right now and it'd be started on the side by Third Street. And redoing that, there's some electrical sewers that need to be updated down there. I just think it's, we can't let the campground keep going like it is without making improvements. That's only my opinion. I mean, it's a great attraction for a town, revenue for a town. And we need to get a couple pieces here and there, fix the fence till then. How long, how long with this fence pricing last, I mean, I'll do.
If I had to guess, we're probably looking at thirty days.
So it's seven twenty-five half for.
So twenty-four days. It's probably, if we did order it, it's probably going to take at least a month for it to all to come in. Depending, you know, two to four weeks for it to show up, so.
But some, you know, another one of my thoughts on the campground thing is the cabin seem to be getting rented a lot. You know, if we look at putting another cabin down there, coming whatever direction to the north, you know, then we would take some fence out. We would need the fence to move all the way past in. Just some ideas like that, I'd like to maybe visit with before we go ahead and put a fence in and say, all right, we're going to change this now, let's take this fence out.
Well, I mean, in, and I'm, you know, I'm kind of on the, the board with Dale as far as in that, I'm probably kind of the one that said, maybe we could put a bigger package together. We do have some sewer that at the end of the season, we're going to have to dig out and fix because it's just, they're broken. Um, so, and then, um, some of the electrical, um, and we were talking, you know, this morning is the bigger the campers are, the bigger load that it's taking, we just had to replace a transformer. I think that, you know, over when, when did we put?
Saturday.
Saturday, um, that we think we actually just replaced, um, Trent thought we replaced it in the last couple of years and it got hot. Um, so I think the load on the, on the campground is becoming more and more. Um, so I, I think putting a bigger package together that we can incorporate any fence, yes, the fence is rotting, we know this. It needs to be replaced, but I think if we were to put a bigger package together and say, okay, these are the improvements that we would like to see with the campground, yeah, I know future down the road, we can certainly do a whole lot more, you know, with putting fifty amps or, you know. I think we could maybe do it in some phases, but I think we could put kind of an improvement package together and say, this could be part of whichever package we want it to be part of.
So we have the money for that?
Yeah, the budget there.
And that's something that we would take a look at. If, there are some of the things that I think, I mean, obviously the sewer we have to fix. I mean, we, we can't not, not fix it. Some of the electrical issues, we need to take a look at and say, do we need to do something better down there? So I think some of the things, whether it's in the budget or not, I think we need to figure out how that's going to play and how that's going to work.
Sure.
So.
Like Dale, I think it'd be good for you to take a look on this because. You might be happy to be on the lead of the committee and set forth, but I got some ideas. Yeah. I'd like to run by.
I'd be honored to look at it.
I'll find it out for you. We'll work with Jason and Teresa, so we know what all the ins and outs are down there. I'm happy with that.
Jason, one thing we did, I got more calls on this than I did on things that I think are a lot more important, which is surprising sometimes. But I had more people calling and saying they like wood, look over the vinyl plank.
I'm up for whatever y'all tell.
I don't care. I did, I did quite a number of calls about it.
Yeah.
I have one suggestion, like the vinyl wood, if you're mowing over there with a bet, it'll splatter all over the vinyl fence.
Oh, yeah.
It'll stain. It'll stain, it'll gross right away.
Yep.
If it's going to be inwardly, it's the splatter on the camper, get over there, you don't blow it all off. But the vinyl fence, you're not going to see that grass on a wood fence, my vinyl fence, it will show up.
And I don't disagree with that. There's, I think there's more maintenance on the side of a vinyl fence than there is on the wood fence.
Yep.
Even though, you know, we replace posts and things when people hit them, but I think at the end of the day, I think there's a little more maintenance to make it look, keep it looking nice with the vinyl fence.
It'll take quite a few years for the weed whackers to cut their new post down, really.
Give us time.
Did you get other words?
We have not, but we're, we're working on it.
I'm excited to see it.
I bet you see a snow cone issue.
Heard that too today, Mayor.
I'm not opposed to that either.
Yes.
So we just, uh, table that fence for now? Does that sound great?
We need to stay on.
Yes.
Yes.
Let me know, let me know when you want me.
Yeah.
High level, give you my vision and then.
Let me know if you guys are available the week of the fifteenth.
Yep.
Next week I'm not.
I'm here every day. I'm available this week.
You do it this week too.
I'm available the rest of the week.
I've set up a, Teresa, I've set up a meeting for us on Wednesday with that club stuff.
Okay, well, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll talk, we'll get it figured out, okay. So, um, I copied basically, um, for you guys, what I gave you back at budget time. Yeah, that, I had it. I have my own copy, I have my own copy. Um, so the water rates, basically, I'm, I'm proposing that we, um, move forward so that I can get the, the ordinance prepared for you with, with a five percent increase. Um, I, I just don't think, I mean, the water ended up being about a hundred thousand in the hole, um, this fiscal year. Um, I just don't see any other way that we are going to move forward without doing something. And, and I don't think this is drastic, it's not, it, their, their bottom dollar bill isn't going to move that, the, the scale that much. I think it, but it, it's a start for us going in the right direction. Um, I just don't see any other way that we cannot start moving the deal. Because when we start looking at the proposals for, you know, putting in a new well, which we know that we need, putting in, you know, then making sure that we're compliant with the water plant, trying to start looking at taking care of the water pressure issues with the water tower. Um, making sure that we have enough to service that, the town and EVAC PO as well. Um, with all of that being said, if we don't start doing something now, you're going to be making some fairly drastic changes when all of that starts to, to, to come together.
Couple, couple of questions. One meter connectors, is that the tap fee that we charge, the three hundred buck tap fee that we go out and do?
Isn't that the price of the meter? Isn't that what we charge? That's not the tap fee?
No, um, well.
Yeah, meter connection.
I know when I built my last place, I had to pay the three hundred dollar tap fee plus buy the meter. I know when I built my last place, I had to pay the three hundred dollar tap fee plus buy the meter.
Yeah, you had to tap the, tap the water main.
Right, and they charge for that, which is fine. I had somebody tell me that we don't charge enough to cover our cost on that.
I, I would not disagree with that.
So we need to look at changing that if that's the case. We can't go backwards on that.
The one thing I would say on that...
If that's true.
It, I would tell you it's a hundred percent true.
Okay.
One thing that I would say on that is when you read our city ordinance on when it talks about the tap fees, the contractor's digging to the main and then we jump down in the hole, we tap it for three hundred bucks. We're not, we're not breaking even on that. If you also read what our ordinance states, it says as long as the superintendent or the assistant verifies, we don't have to tap it. We can let the contractor tap it with us verifying the whole entire situation. I don't know how the council feels about that, but most of the people that we have had work in town are fairly confident in that. You know...
What percent, Jason, what, how many of them percent wise, just roughly, are tapping their own? Half?
In all honesty, I've tapped one main since I've been here in a year.
So they're tapping their own.
They're tapping their own and calling us going, hey, I'm gonna tap right now. If they gave us a couple more than an hour notice, we could probably work that into our schedule. But when they call and go, oh, by the way, I'm, I got the drill on the pipe. I, I don't have time to go over there and go disconnect. I'm gonna throw my stuff on it now.
Right. Well, I just wanna make sure that if we're changing water rates, that we make sure we're not doing something for less than it costs us.
But if we have to tap it, I believe the last I heard, and don't quote me a hundred percent on this, but like Saks City, I believe if they go tap it, it's like seven hundred bucks.
And the other thing that I, I brought this up to you guys before, I'd like to change the minimum of the gallonage and add them two fees together, eleven seventy-six and four seventy, change it to two thousand gallons.
And raise the, the basic rate.
Yeah, the, the base charge. So what she has proposed for twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five, take that eleven seventy-six and that four seventy, combine it together, make that the base charge and then change the gallons over to two thousand gallons.
That is the same money.
It is. Our full-time resident.
That's, I, I mean, I will say that that's not typical in most communities to have a two thousand gallon over. It usually goes then by a thousand gallon. I mean...
I know that.
I, I, we are, we are...
We're not a typical community.
Right. At the end of the day, I don't know. I'd have to do some math because I don't think that you're, if you keep it at four seventy for two thousand gallons, then we aren't making any headway on the negative.
I'm not changing what you're proposing. I'm changing...
You're saying the base charge would be six, what, sixteen, forty-six, whatever.
Sixteen, forty-six.
And the, and the gallon charge would be then gallon charge over two thousand gallons would be four dollars.
Right, so you're just putting that extra thousand, costing that extra thousand in, so you're automatically charging, you know, giving them two thousand.
And that would help, that would help.
Even if they're gonna use forty gallons or four hundred gallons, they're paying for, they're still paying for the extra. Okay.
Because our base, because our base charges, you know, we've got three demeans, we've got our expenses, that stuff has went up. And so we're just changing it to accumulate that. I don't know how that whole, we got around late that people were only there three months out of the year. Right, yeah, so that's, that's my proposal.
It's not gonna hurt anybody to your full-time, but for, for the people that are using money, it really shouldn't.
Right.
But if you've got some part-time people, then they're, they're gonna pay a little bit for the water now.
Yeah.
And I also would like to make, make a proposal that we change the utility late fee from five dollars to twenty-five dollars.
I have a hundred and seventy-nine, is that up? Yep.
Because we, we, we on average send out a hundred late notices every month.
And then the reconnect fee should be changed as well.
So that's not really a reconnect fee? I mean, if, if somebody calls us to shut their water off for the season, it costs twenty dollars. There's no fee to turn it on. So if you're going to, you know, are you gonna charge them to shut it off and then charge them to turn it on?
Well...
We have it in the past. I'm not saying we can't do it, just saying right now.
I'm just saying we have the expense of our employees going to do that.
Exactly.
And twenty bucks doesn't cover two trips. Twenty-five bucks is real. I would say that's it.
Do we charge anything if like, so if we, if, if we turn somebody off for no payment, do we charge anything for them to get reconnected?
No.
But many towns, many charged, towns charge a minimum of like seventy-five bucks.
Sure, sure. So if you wanna add that as a...
And that's why I printed out the water rates here, just, you know...
I'm all favor.
Can I add all that in for the next council meeting so we can fix that?
Yep, I can certainly do that.
The one caveat, don't get me wrong, I, I hate going to shut people's water off, whether it's or turn it back on for the summer and the winter. I mean, it's time consuming. Um, the caveat that I would put with that is if we're gonna raise that fee, it needs to make sure that we are notifying everybody very sternly that, that does not give you the right to have your plumber come turn it off because, no disrespect towards any of the plumbers, just in the year that I've been here, I've had to replace four curb stops that we didn't touch. And their plumbers touched it and broke it. Well, we own the curb stop. I have to dig it. I gotta fix it.
Well, we can put in there, if your plumber, put in our new water rate ordinance while we're changing it, put right in there. If somebody other than city staff messes with the curb stop and breaks, you're like, you are liable for that repair.
I'm perfectly game for that.
Does that make sense to you guys?
Would you, would you put a, a minimum of five hundred bucks?
Yep. Whatever he thinks it costs them.
Yeah, yeah. Because you put a dollar, that, that plumber might be more expensive, which is, he has to do it right. This is where we start, where we end up.
Kay brought up a good point sitting here, since we're talking about changing the ordinance on this. Do we say that the homeowner owns the curb stop and we go to the curb stop? Now it puts the responsibility of that curb stop on the homeowner and not on us.
A lot of communities that way.
We own from the main to the curb stop. Currently, we own from the main.
Including?
Including the curb stop. I mean, the curb stops are roughly around forty-three bucks a piece?
Any issues with that if you gotta go shut it off then for non-payment?
That would be the, that would be the only, well, there's caveats in the ordinance where you, where the homeowner still owns the curb stop, but then we have, we require access and that we are the ones that are supposed to be utilizing that shop. Basically, it's, it, if, how do I wanna put it?
Don't touch my stuff if you don't have to.
Right.
But we can look, we can look at that piece and I'll look at a couple other city ordinances and see how we can match that up.
So if it's right now, if I remember correctly, this city brings the water to the property line. The homeowner is responsible for sewer all the way to the main.
Yes.
Correct.
Right.
And there's some communities that basically the service line along with the curb stop is owned by, well, is owned by the property owner all the way to the main for the water.
So if we do the, where the homeowner owns a curb stop, I mean, we place it in there where it still has to be on their property?
No, I think a lot of them still sit in, the curb stop still sits in the right of way, like where it is now. It's just where the liability holds on replacement and repair of that curb stop of the rate.
Well, I know in the three that are built on Crescent Park Drive, the curb stop is on our property. It was brought to our property, then we had to take it from there to...
Brought to your property line.
Brought, they brought it to the property line, up the corner of the property.
Yeah.
And then we had to hook onto it from there, which, one way or the other. Where you run, run into problems with that is when we're running the problem with sewer, now they're gonna go underneath the road to get to the water line on that side.
Right. And, and we need to look at that and make sure that we, we've got it. Cause again, Lakeview is a little bit of a unique community and how we would wanna make sure that we do it. If we're gonna make changes, we wanna make sure they're good changes, not bad changes.
Right, yeah.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
No, we'll second.
Second. Motion to adjourn.